Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
6:00 PM on Thursday, the 24th of September, and I am calling the meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District to order. I'm now looking for any, I guess we, let's see, just take a quick second, something. Sure, I've got this right. Which order I do this? Turn your screen, sorry guys. There we go. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Do we have communications and/or public comment by anyone? I will let you know that we've had communications about the Halifax-Readsboro issue, but I think that's more appropriate to get into when we get into the discussion about that, which we will later on here. So, and in fact, that is under 6:00, so we will do it there. Anything, any other comments, anybody? Oh, and Lynn, Carrie, I'm told that as a protocol, we should always announce if chat is open, and chat is appropriate in my ruling under public comments, which will be read by the, by Lynn, or if we're having a discussion on an item and I ask for comment from the community, we'll turn it back on during that period. If people have motions that they would wish to make and they feel detailed, we will also open it up to allow you to write out your motion because that makes it easier for you and it makes it easier for the recording secretary. So, them's the rules as of tonight. They may change in future meetings, but we need to state at the beginning of each meeting how this goes until we have an official policy. So, having heard no other communications, let's move on to review and approve board minutes, give you a minute or so, and then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve them. Break your silence here, do we have a motion?
This is Cheryl, I'm...
Go ahead.
This is Cheryl, I move to approve the minutes of August 27.
All right. We will do a roll call on this, and I'll start with Lynn Morgan.
Want to ask for any comments or discussions before voting?
We can. Go right ahead, Cheryl, it sounds like you'd like to ask something.
No, I actually don't have any. I was just surprised to have us go straight to a vote.
Does anybody have any comments on the, on the minutes? Are there any errors? They're obvious. With that, I will go back and start to head onto a vote. Lynn, yea or nay?
Yes.
Cheryl, yea or nay?
Yes, aye.
All right. Melissa?
Yes.
Jessa?
Yes.
All right. Did I miss somebody somehow? I think I did miss somebody. One, two, three. Forget everybody. Okay, good. So, the minutes are approved. Onto item 5, which are reports. And this is your time to shine. Lynn?
I spoke, I just got off the phone with the superintendent. He indicated that the news that he had to tell, he sent out in a newsletter last week, but he's also sending one out again tomorrow to update if there are any update families and board members. So, that'll come out tomorrow. And I think that's pretty much, I think you'll, you'll hear a lot more when the principals talk about what's happening in their schools. Thank you.
That was short and sweet. Before I get to, and I needed to put this in the agenda, which I, Lynn, between you and I, we're going to remember to mention this to Nicole, I want to have in these digital meetings, after call to order, an item 1A called introductions, so that I know everyone is on here. And with the board's permission, I'm going to ask people to introduce themselves and their role for being here. I think it's just good practice for anyone that might watch this, and just for the record. I'll start off, I'm Jack Brier, and I'm chair of this rodeo, and I'm a member from Grafton, Vermont. Kathy, why don't you tell people who you are?
I'm Kathy Siano Goodwin, I'm a select board member for Grafton.
Lynn Morgan, you're next.
Lynn Morgan, I'm a school board member from Athens.
Cheryl?
Hi, Cheryl Charles, I'm a school board member from Westminster.
Helen Richards Field?
Helen Richards Field, and I'm the principal at Grafton Athens Elementary School.
Wiz?
Hi, I'm Liz Hardy, I'm the principal at Westminster Center School.
Joe?
I am Joe Smith, I'm the counselor at Westminster School.
Flora? Pagan?
Yes, I'm the business manager of the business office.
Jessa?
I am Jessa West Clark, I represent Grafton on this board.
Dempsey?
I'm a par educator at the Westminster Center School.
Adam Halleck?
I am Adam Halleck, director of maintenance for Westminster Community Schools.
Melissa?
I'm Melissa Carlstrom, I serve on the Westminster School Board.
Gary?
Gary DeRosa, I'm the head custodian at the Grafton Elementary School.
David Clark? David's just spying on us. Nicole, if you're active?
Sorry, Jack, I am here, but I'm here under the venue of Grafton Burger &amp; Brew. You're our entertainment tonight, thank you.
Well, if you did, and you can get this served virtually, more power to you. Nicole?
Hi, Nicole, just taking minutes for the meeting.
Thank you very much. Charlie?
Hi, I'm Charlie Hutchinson, I'm a advisory board member for Westminster Schools.
Was and is Charlie. Paula?
Hi, I'm Paula Borakov, and I am a kindergarten teacher in Westminster.
All right. Wendy, are you on the line?
Yeah, I'm here for a little while. I'll see, I see how interesting it gets. I'm just kidding.
We can turn you off now, Wendy, it's going to be boring. All right, very good. Thanks a lot, everybody. Now, back onto our agenda, back to principals' reports.
Sure. Helen and I kind of worked together on our principal report this time, so we'll kind of go back and forth through the different larger concepts. So, the first one is enrollment. So, in Westminster, we have 62 students in Group A, 67 students in Group B, and 21 students who are currently enrolled in the VTVLC, fully remote option.
And that, good evening, everyone. And I would say that Liz and I decided to do it this way because we're doing so much together, that we thought it would be appropriate to report to you based on some of the things we're doing jointly, as well as some things that are separate. So, the enrollment at Grafton is, we have 16 students in Group A, 17 in Group B, and 15 are enrolled in the VTVLC.
So, we've put in place routines and procedures for families and students to follow all the requirements, and that has really set a rhythm, and it's been working. Families have been wonderful understanding, they've been doing the self-screening at home, we've been doing our additional temperature check at the school, and our arrival and dismissal has been pretty smooth. During the day, kids are, been adhering to the mask requirement, social distancing, it's really been, it's working probably better than expected. The next heading would be our Farm to School grant update. So, in Westminster, Mandy, our librarian, takes her library classes out to the garden. The chickens are here, and the coop is done. So, classroom teachers are integrating this garden work through cross-curricular activities that align with our year-long theme of Grow Love. We have been harvesting gallons of Carmen peppers and crates of cabbage, all that have been brought to the cafe services. And next week, we're planning on harvesting kale, potatoes, and shard. Students have also been painting garden signs, learning chicken chores, and we have five hens and one rooster. They're not laying eggs yet, but that's another thing that we're hoping to send over to the cafeteria. And Mandy has also started a garden loom that students can add to during their sessions in the garden.
At Grafton, we're fortunate enough to also have Ms. Mandy, and she's using the garden as a part of her library lessons, and classroom teachers are also using it to integrate it as much as possible through their theme of community. And plans are in the works right now to purchase a moving kitchen. Mandy applied for a grant last year from Farm to School and was awarded a portable kitchen. I hear it's on wheels and comes with all the mechanisms that you need to actually do cooking, either in the classrooms or outside, as, as she sees fit. She's also working on integrating some future programs into our, hopefully soon-to-start 21st Century program. It's called the Dream Program, and we're hoping to get that going as soon as we can get all our ducks in a row.
So, our next one is the 21st Century Grant that we were awarded last spring, Westminster and Grafton Elementary. And our new director is Orianna, who also is the director of the Bellas Falls Middle School program, after-school program. And we've just met and discussed our site and the location of the program, how that will look this year. We've sent out surveys to families to gain an understanding of how many, how many families would be interested in the program, and we're hopeful that we'll send sign-ups next week and we can begin the program, the earliest would be September 28th, that's our goal. Well, that's not...
At Grafton?
I just want to correct myself, I just said the 28th, which is incorrect, because that would be on Monday, which is not going to happen. The earliest would probably be the 5th, October 5th.
And at Grafton, the Dream Program stands for Discover, Respect, Enrich, Achieve, and Motivate. So, Mary Beth is being hired as the site coordinator at Grafton under Orianna's direction, and they're working together right now on designing, you know, a letter to go home to families, to determine interest, how many programs, who needs busing services, all those sort of pre-program information that we need to set this up. They're also working together, there's some paperwork that needs to be done at the state level to get our grant funds solidified. And, you know, we don't necessarily have a start date yet, we're hoping that as soon as all the paperwork and all of logistics are in place, we can start it as soon as everything's in order.
The next thing Helen and I wanted to talk about were, was the assessments that we will be conducting throughout the year, and this just informs our data-driven instruction, and it focuses on all the Common Core instruction and guides our classroom instruction. So, I know Grafton, I think, was this week, Westminster will be next week with the MAPS, the measure of annual progress for ELA and math. This is an adaptive assessment that students will take three times a year. We started this last year, we were never able to do the spring assessment, but we'll be taking the fall one, Grafton this week, I believe, and Westminster next week. We will be doing the Fountasupinell Benchmark Assessments for Reading, which will be getting underway this week and next week, which will give us a baseline of a child's instructional reading level and independent reading level, to where to focus our instruction. And then also, with our K-1, 2, we use the PIANO-A, which is the Primary Numbers and Operations Assessment, and the ENOA. And Helen, can you help me on that acronym? Is it elementary numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, that's a math assessment that gives tons of information on how students are interpreting numbers and using them with a variety of operations. And Helen and I are also talking a lot about the high-leverage concepts in math, and what are the big ideas, when we have this limited time with kids, what are these big ideas that we need to expose them to the most? So, that'll be, you know, as we talk about our planning, we'll be talking about high-leverage concepts.
Is there going to be, sorry, can I ask one question? I know, I want to pull the board. On assessments, are we going to have assessments at the two schools and the kids that are in the Vermont Learning Center? Because I think one of the things that we'll, as a board, are going to want to know as we plan for this next semester is just to get a sense of the relative effectiveness of the two approaches.
Yes.
And I think that'd be a useful thing for everyone.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the VTVLC has their own assessments and use that throughout their instruction.
Yes.
So, it's separate from the assessments that we typically run.
Apple's versus oranges, is that kind of how this boils out?
Well, my understanding is that they are using the Common Core standards, which is what most Vermont schools obviously follow, so there should be some apples to apples, but I'm unfamiliar with the assessments that they do use. Perhaps Lynn, Carrie can weigh in on that, if she has information on exactly what assessments they use.
Can you repeat the question, Jack? I'm sorry.
Not a problem, just because you weren't paying attention, but that's all right. Here's, here's the question, and that is, we have these two methods of instruction. One is the hybrid model, and we have the Vermont Learning Center model. And I think going into semester two, we would probably like to have some sense as to how the two stack up in terms of effectiveness. And so, the question is, do we have, are we using similar metrics? I know that's a damn small sample size, but it's still, it's what we got.
Oh, thank you, yeah. So, I think it's hard for people to understand, and we've been spending a lot of time trying to explain to parents and the greater community that while we support VTVLC with our teachers and providing our students with computers, we have no say in how they're running it, what their curriculum is, and what those assignments and assessments are.
Yeah.
They are their own school, their own accreditation through the state. Our, our district-level assessments, our district-level measures that were required by the state to have, we have MAPS, measures of academic progress. Our students have been doing that. In fact, I think that Saxons River and GES are just about done tomorrow. So, that's the information we're using. We cannot take the kids that are in VTVLC and say, "You need to take the MAPS too." Because essentially, even though they're our school, our community people, and we're supporting them with the, the technology and the infrastructure and the teacher, we are not, that's a school that is not run by us. So, if there's a problem with the school, or with the teacher, the parents don't understand, they continue to come to us, and we really, we don't have that kind of ability. So, no, we're not assessing them. If they come back in January, if they come back next year, we will assess them.
I guess the question wasn't so much whether we're running their program, because I think we know that we're not.
Well...
What we, we're trying to figure out is whether or not, we've got these two, we've got these two systems that are running in parallel, and the question about whether or not it's effective is, is a key one for us, because we're paying the freight and we're recommending it to parents, and it would be good to know if, in fact, we had some way of knowing how it stacked up.
Yeah, and we don't have any way of doing that. It's apples and oranges at this point. When they come back to us, if and when they come back to us in our district with our curriculum and our infrastructure, then we certainly will know where they stand. But at this point, no, we have no access to those students, they actually are now in virtual learning academy school. So, that's where they are.
All right, I see Jess's hand up. Jess, your mic.
Yeah. As a parent, I was told more than once that my kids would be getting the same assessment as the ones here in the district, because they're reported to the state by district. We were also told that our students are still enrolled in this district, and that's actually an important legal distinction, especially for the high school kids who want to get into sports and extracurriculars. They're told that they were part of this district and they're still students of that school. Is that not accurate?
They are, they're enrolled, we still have them in Power School, but we don't have access to their classroom, to their, you know, teachers, we don't have access to that curriculum. So, it's not...
But the testing is based on standards, not curriculum, correct? Because the curriculum is how it's taught, to the standard.
And as far as I know, we, no, I can tell you this, we are not assessing those students because VTVLC is assessing them, and I don't know what tools they use. They are being assessed. I don't know what tools they're using.
Could you go?
Are they going to be reported, like usually the state breakdown is by district and by school? How are they going to be reported when you go to the state dashboard?
My sense is, I don't know. I don't know if, yeah, they may end up having their own school with the state, and in fact, I believe that when we look at all the districts on the state list, I think they're kind of in the bottom where they say, yeah, Vermont Virtual Learning Academy, so no.
Can you find out the answers to those questions? Because I have had a high school parent ask me...
So, the high school is...
If they're, if they're entitled to the same, essentially the same services that homeschoolers would be? And they've gotten different answers from different people.
The high school is different. So, what, what we're doing is K-8. The high school, they would need to go directly to their guidance counselor and their principal, because I do not believe that those students are 100% VTVLC. I think there's certain courses, and there's other courses they have in school, but I do believe that they can take part of the extracurriculars and all that. That is my understanding.
So, are the K through 8, or the K through 6 students in Grafton entitled to the same access to school functions that, say, homeschoolers would be?
Well, that's different, and I'll tell you why. Yes, in a normal year, yes, but right now, we have APod and BPOD, and I, so if they were going to be engaged in a, something that the school has, so we have meetings on Wednesday, they can meet with their peers.
Folks, excuse me, I, you know, the question is really simply focused on whether or not we had testing metrics in common, just to make sure.
I don't...
I also saw Helen's had her hand up, trying to add some value to this, I just want to give her that opportunity. I also want to ask, as a courtesy to everybody, when we have these, we normally don't ask people to address the chair, but I'm going to ask you to do it when we get into detail, because it's a meeting of 20 people, not two or three. Small, small thing, not, not a slap at anybody. Helen?
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to add, and Lynn can verify this or not, but I'm assuming that they also have to take the Sback assessment that all Vermont students have to take in the spring. They'll do it with VTVLC, just like our students will do it in our buildings, but that's a common statewide mandatory assessment. Is that correct, Lynn?
You know, I, I believe that is true, because it's accredited by the state.
Right.
Although I don't know how they would do it virtually, but I'm sure that they have a way.
All right. Jess, if you and Lynn want to carry on with this, we can do that. I also want to make sure that other people have a chance to ask any questions, but Jess...
I guess rather than carry on, I would just like the administration to provide clarification as to exactly what district our kids are part of, what standard assessments they'll be getting, and how they'll be reported on the state dashboard. I guess that's the simplest way to answer a lot of those questions.
There we are. Wiz and Helen, did, I think we interrupted you in your report, do we, you want to carry on?
Yes, please, thank you. So, the next part is something that both Liz and I are very excited about. We've been working as an elementary team with our other elementary colleagues, and we had our first district-wide elementary PLC on Wednesday. And one of the things that we're focusing on is trying to have a common planning tool that all students and all families will have access to, to try to bring clarity to what's expected. And, you know, the research clearly says that, you know, once kids know what they're expected to learn, it's a whole lot easier for them to learn it than if it's kind of this vague concept. So, that's one of the goals we've been working on, is clarity around that. So, our focus at the PLC this last Wednesday was all about sharing what they have designed so far, and getting critical feedback and critical positive next steps from all their colleagues, and so they can continually improve their practice in this. And I'm going to see if I can do this, but I'd like to share a few, so you can get a sense of what I'm talking about. So, I'm going to show a, let's see, let's do, let's see if my magic will work, oops. So, who's the host? Are you the host, Lynn, or Jack?
I think we're co-hosts, Lynn, can you?
And one of you make me a co-host, so I can share, or maybe, you hover over my name in Participants, and you get the More button? Click on that, you just made me a host for five minutes, and then I can share?
Make co-host, see if that happened. There, that's, I think you're it now.
All right, let's see if I can do it.
Thank you for instructing me, you're obviously a good teacher.
You did that. Good job. All right, so I'm going to first show what it looks like for a classroom teacher, and this is the third and fourth grade teacher at Grafton. Everybody see that? So, we've divided it up by academic content, so we've got a math section, an ELA section, and a science section. And we also included a social and emotional section, because we really want our focus these first six weeks to be on taking care of their social and emotional needs. So, what's in green is, at the top of each category is the learning intention, and learning intentions are typically a unit. You know, if you're learning, you know, multiplication, you don't, it's not just a one-shot deal, it's a unit that you learn. And so, that's the learning intention. And in third and fourth grade, what they're learning is to practice kindness every day. And so, the learning target for this week that they're focusing on is I can share about something nice that someone did for me. So, that's sort of the, what the intention and the targets are for this week in third and fourth grade. So, students get a copy of this in their Google Classroom, and families get a copy, not only in the Google Classroom, but they get a paper copy that goes homes in their home-to-school folder. Then, as you work your way down, you can see under ELA, this is what the students are going to watch or listen to. These are the expectations that they must do when they're not in school, getting direct instruction. And of course, that's either Monday or Tuesday, or Thursday or Friday. And then, there's some other options, if they want to, you know, explore more, or interested and engaged and want to keep learning, there's some other options down here for them. And obviously, as the weeks go on, this will get more and more sophisticated, but right now, I would say the focus is more on helping students learn how to access and use the many tools that we're providing for them. So, that's an example of a third and fourth. And then, if I go back to, at Grafton, we have, each of the specials, they've created a group one. So, all the specials are on this specials weekly planning document, so music, art, PE, health, guidance, library, technology. And they do the same thing. And they've got it organized amongst themselves around who creates it, who posted on the Google Classroom. It's, it's quite a system that they've created. And it's, it's the same idea with what they're learning, what's expected, and other possible things that they could do at home that are optional. So, this just gives a real clear... So this just gives a real clear map to the families and to the students about what they're going to be learning. And Liz, I'm just going to share for you and then you can explain yours. Does that make it easier? So this is Westminster's fifth and sixth grade.
So again, like Helen was saying with hers, there's the learning intention. And then, let me just see, great, there's a meeting link right at the top. There's a learning intention, there's the directions. And then we just focused on the remote days and we broke it down like this is a cohort A. And this is distributed if you're cohort A and your in-person learning is Monday and Tuesday. On Tuesday, this will go home with a student and be emailed to the parent and posted in the Google Classroom. And it shows your Wednesday work and your Thursday work. And I believe if you scroll down your Friday work, but it has directions and embedded links to different menus, a math menu, a literacy menu, confused. There's some more links to help Claire, help the child clarify and what to turn in on Monday. And then just a reminder of how you can access supports on your remote days. And we have just added, you know, instead of having a separate specials planning sheet, we've just added one special per week to the grade level. So this week was music and they did the same down the side.
And the last one is a classroom three, four at Westminster.
This is a fourth grade classroom. Yep. And just like we've seen before, the learning intentions, the meeting link is up there. The directions, any embedded links they might need in the directions, where they can find the directions, the Google slides that are in the Google Classroom. And then as they scroll down, you'll see, you know, this is a cohort B student. So that means that their in-person is Thursday, Friday. So this goes home with them on Friday. And this is their Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday assignments that are laid out there. Um, are you confused? This is how you can find extra support and what to turn in when you come back to school the following Thursday.
So this is obviously work that we're doing, not just with Liz and I, but we're also doing it with Carrie and Laura at Central and Sexton's River, just trying to build cohesiveness across the district.
Yeah. And to lead off of that Helen, the elementary principals do meet weekly and we are working on ways we can support our teachers. And one way in doing that is to create these PLCs that also meet every other Wednesday. So it's grade level teams, grade level PLCs that meet every other Wednesday. And really our focus is going to be on supporting each other through the implementation process of Fountas and Fennel Classroom. And it's just increasing our expertise, sharing strategies, setting goals for ourselves, and just expanding our learning on literacy. So that has been really helpful. So the next piece is going to be using the outdoors because, and Helen, I'm going to ask, since you probably still have sharing rights, can you share the pictures that are embedded in the, in the document?
You bet.
Yeah, we've had wonderful luck the first few weeks of school. We've been getting outside tons, which has been wonderful. And I know the students in Grafton and the teachers in Grafton have really taken advantage of the nature center. And our students have taken advantage of our property and Evans Woods. And just really bringing kids outside to get as much airflow as possible. So here are some, we each site ordered tents and I just have some pictures. This is a, by the garden, so there's a tent by the garden that Mandy uses. These are kids harvesting vegetables outside. Other activities. And those are the, all the tents that Westminster has are 10 by 20. We have five of them around the schoolyard. Our Graftons.
So just like Liz was saying, it's, the weather has cooperated ever so nicely. I know we need the rain, but it's been really nice to be able to be outside as much as possible. So this is an example of the nature center. Our third through sixth graders spent some time this week going to the nature center and involved in activities over there. And I happened to watch, get to watch this today. It was a great lesson on learning about what insects are in their wonderful fields that they have. So they spent a lot of time on, uh, learning about it first, and then they headed off into the fields and did some great, you know, investigation and trying to catch some bugs and looking at them and trying to identify them. Was a great find, great learning. And then our tents have finally arrived and they're still looking at bugs. Lots of bug looking. This is their field, just a gorgeous field that they have. And this is an example of how our teachers are using the tents. This is kindergartners doing their read aloud outside in one of the tents that we have. They got their little portable chairs and out they go and set it up and do their learning. This is what it looks like on the outside. There's two of these that are up. And the way that we're doing it at Grafton is each pod is assigned to a tent. So this is the three, four tent. It's a dome tent. And, um, Mary Beth has been the miracle worker and has purchased these, uh, five gallon buckets where there's screw on the top and the kids can put their supplies in the bucket. And then she's got somebody who's building cushions to put on top of the buckets. And so they carry them out to the tent and, um, carry on with their lessons. I suspect that even in the wintertime, we'll build little campfires in there and maybe do, continue to do some of the lessons.
Uh, I see a question from Melissa. Sorry, Melissa, if you had your hand up for a while.
Oh, no, I just raised my hand. I was just curious because I thought that the guidance around using tents was that they couldn't have sides. Otherwise they were the same as being in a building. I thought that the airflow was, and that the tents couldn't have sides. So I was just curious if the guidance changed or if I was mistaken.
I'm unfamiliar with that, but I will look into it to find out more about it. Those, all of those tents have sides that can go up or down depending on, you know, how cold it is outside and windy and how much they want to, you know, pull it together. So I don't know, Liz, are you familiar with the idea of sides or not?
I am. Uh, Liz is right. Uh, they are trying to limit using sides because the whole point of the tent is airflow. Uh, and you know, I know HVAC was a discussion we'll be having here shortly. That's, that's important because the solution to preventing a small enclosed classroom is not to have a smaller enclosed classroom. You know, uh, we just want to be careful about that stuff.
They're beautiful.
They are.
They are beautiful.
Yeah.
Anyway.
All right. So the other thing that's going on is that in Grafton, there's a great organization called Grafton Cares. And they have been wonderful and have donated some thermometers that we've been able to distribute to some of our families so they can do their at-home health check. And this morning was the first time that all families did their check before they got to school. So it was a big celebration. Everybody had a thermometer and everybody knew how to get on and how to do it. And we're working right now with two families to try to get them internet access so that they can participate. Well, they are participating on Wednesday, on the days that they're remote and on Wednesdays. But they're, you know, having to drive to Dunkin' Donuts in Westminster to get access to do that. So we're trying to make that a little bit easier for this family.
Helen, uh, do check with the library, among other places in Grafton because that hotspot, uh, goes some distance. And there may be some other accommodation. We said last year, if it really got down to it, we do satellite connectivity. We weren't pressed on that, but if we have to be, you know, let's have a discussion about that and make sure everybody's got it. Cause I don't want people to go.
Mary Beth told me today that, Mary Beth, I guess is on the library board and she has a meeting tonight also. So she was going to talk with them. I guess they've set a table outside where anybody can go and access the wifi there. But she's going to talk with them about, you know, indoor spot where this family could potentially go and set up.
And, and I think just in the interest of equity, if it gets down to it, we'll have a conversation with, uh, with Ricky and the rest of the team. Cause it's really critical if we're going to do remote learning that we actually give everybody an equal opportunity to do remote learning. And given the cost of school, I'm not willing to, you know, have somebody not get instruction for, because they don't have an ability to get a wifi ended up the hill somewhere.
Right.
Uh, are there any questions for anybody at this point, uh, from my board colleagues? Uh, I see Jessa.
Anybody else?
Well, this is okay, Jessa, I didn't mean to pick on you, it's just.
No, I am, I don't want to sound like I'm being very negative tonight because I am, but without diminishing, I know there's a lot of very hard work going in and I know how insane it is to be a teacher and I only know half of it. But looking at your Google Docs, you're using a CSV file. Are we leveraging G Suite for Education? I believe that's available through the SU. Or have we considered using Moodle or something like that, open source and actual learning management platform? Cause it, it seems like we're not leveraging the software if we're using a CSV file with clickable links in it. And I also think that's probably a lot of teacher and administration time that if we're using a more efficient platform, that wouldn't take so much of everybody's time and might be easier.
And my understanding right now is that the district is supporting G Suite. So it's Google Classroom and Docs and Spreadsheets and.
And G Suite Education specifically, or are we using just G Suite Enterprise?
Not, I, I'm not sure the answer to that question. That would be something we'd have to check.
Ricky question, we'll put it on the list, Lynn.
It's, I think it could save you guys time. That's part of it and, and make it easier for everybody.
Oh, Jess, I think it's a great question. Let's, uh, let's pull Ricky in. We haven't harassed him in a while and I've been waiting to, on a whole bunch of things. So we can put this near the top of the pile. Yes, Lynn, Morgan.
If there's any students in the Athens area that are unable to get online, please let me know. There's a couple of sources I might be able to work out where we can get them indoors. They don't have to sit out in the parking lot.
Thank you.
I can think of one in particular. Thank you Lynn for that, good point. Uh, I would likewise say to, um, to Helen and Frank Lee, uh, to Liz, if you have kids that are hung up due to electroconnectivity, uh, we've fixed this, uh, in the past. We will fix this, just let me know.
Great, thank you very much.
Uh, Cheryl.
Thank you. Uh, first I wanted to check to make sure we got the whole report from Helen and Liz. Was that, did you complete before we get into these additional questions?
Not quite. We have a few more items.
Uh, it was really a chance to give people questions rather than have them take notes for 10 minutes later. Uh, Melissa, is anything on what we've raised so far? And then we'll come back.
I'm going to wait.
All right, uh, ladies, uh, prestige, sorry.
That's okay. So the next, um, piece that's going on at Grafton is that we work with the Holt, uh, grant. And they, um, are wonderful about, in the past, supporting a summer program at Grafton. But as you know, we were not able to have that program, uh, this summer. And they, we just got a letter from them authorizing us to use those funds, which is $11,000 to help support, uh, programs throughout the school year. And in specific, you know, needs that we have around, uh, technology. So that may be where we might be able to use some of those funds to help with these kids who are having issues with connectivity. I would, anything pertaining to keeping kids safe and healthy. So any materials that we might need with that. And we're using some of that funds, obviously to help purchase our tents, uh, to do some outdoor, uh, learning.
Great. Another thing we wanted to share tonight was school pictures. Typically Westminster uses Life Touch, which is not offering outdoor pictures this year. So Grafton in the past has used a local photographer. So both sites will be using, um, a local photographer. It'll be the week of October 12th. We're also offering opportunity for our fully remote learners. If they want to get school pictures this year, a time for them to come and take the pictures outside. So that is still able to happen. So moving into air quality controls, I invited Adam to help because this is truly a different language for me. And he has been so patient in explaining all things. So I'm going to give it a, a shot in explaining this, but Adam will definitely be able to answer more questions than I can, so.
Adam and Gary, I'm guessing both.
Yeah, Gary is here too for Grafton. Um, so in Westminster, we received a verbal agreement that our project would be covered 90% and we'll be able to cover the remaining 10% of the project through our local budget. So last week, Adam and Ricky met with Control Technologies, which is the company that we will be using for this project to discuss the IT portion. So we will be ordering, excuse me?
Acronym word, IET.
IT, information technology.
Oh, I said IET, sorry.
Oh, no, yeah, um, IT. So that part will be ordered and hopefully installed next week. And so once the part is installed, there'll be a run of equipment evaluation. And after the evaluation, there might be additional proposals. We don't foresee there being, the engineer said that we are not, um, he doesn't think there'll be a need for further replacement of the equipment after the evaluation. But they will do, um, an evaluation and then decide if, what the next steps might be, if any. So this will be an upgrade for us to allow us to use our current systems to the full capacity. So, um, we're currently pulling in fresh air through two systems, but the upgrades will allow the fresh air to pull in every room and the temperature to be set through the computer-based controls. So we have, um, right now windows are just open and airflow is running through the building pretty easily. But with these new controls, we'll be able to use the, um, units that we have around the entire building to pull in the fresh air and keep the temperature at a consistent number. So we will not need to, um, install any air purifiers at this time because once our system is upgraded, we'll feel like this will function as an air purifier, control the temperature levels and control the amount of fresh intake and exhaust filtration out of the building. Um, we also have fans right now as needed, but they aren't really needed because we are in this wonderful flat, land that the wind just really whips through it when all the windows are open. And I will have Adam take any questions because I'm sure he can probably explain it much better than I can. Questions on air quality control, HVAC upgrades. But hopefully it'll be installed next week and we'll be moving forward with the process.
Can I just speak to the board for a few minutes? Just, uh, to sort of reassure, uh, not, maybe not reassure, but back Liz up a little bit there. Um, so we have a wonderful system that was installed in 2008 when we did this. Uh, Jack, you're probably familiar with it, this large addition, Cheryl, you too. And we put in these wonderful systems, but ran out of money at the end and said, well, we don't really need to use the air quality control on this system. We'll just open the window. So there was a lot of controlled, a lot of the devices were sort of rigged around heating and not used all year around air quality. So that's what we're correcting. With this, with this upgrade in this program, that's what we're correcting. We're correcting being able to access every valve, every control, synchronize them so that, you know, we're pulling in the right amount of air at the right time of year, depending on temperatures, um, so that the, the, the quality is better. Um, and I guess that's in a shortfall. You know, certainly, um, a map could be put out to help answer any questions. Is there any questions?
Oh, I see. Did Cheryl, is that your hand up or are you just? Okay, I'm going to show off. Um, Adam, you got H, do you have HE filters in the, in your, uh, and all this HVAC? Do you have that kind of high, uh, those kind of filters that are used for virus control in hospitals? There, you can get them cheaply. I've actually got one in, oh, in my room here that, uh, the air. For everybody else, they're what's in a good high-end vacuum cleaner. You know, the ones that get all the little folds in them. That's an HE filter and you can put those in HVAC systems. You usually just have to increase the, uh, the flow rate in order to make them work. Do we have anything like that, that contemplated or necessary?
So we, so talking with the engineer, that is one piece. When we upgrade the controls, we will be able to go to a full Merck 13. We'd like, they, we'd like to see us be accessible at a Merck 15, but not necessary. Therefore, exactly what you're saying. Therefore, exactly what you're saying, Jack, we'll have, we'll have more control of what we pull and push with that better quality filter. We currently are across the board between, uh, nine and 11. Uh, most of our filters are Merck 10s. Um, on like our heating systems and our big air systems that are in the, uh, gymnasium and the dining room.
Okay, uh, the other, the other question is, uh, uh, a lot of systems now are using these uh, high-intensity UV lights and they run right in the pipes, uh, they're really cheap. Uh, and I would at least recommend you take a look at them. There's a robotics company that I've worked with that actually has a unit that strolls in the building if it really comes down to it.
Yeah. We, that, that did come up in conversation, it actually came up in conversation from the, the woman that we're working, um, through Vermont Efficiency with. She had mentioned that in a couple, uh, instances, we haven't gotten really that far. We need to get through this first step first so that we can then reevaluate and, uh, go from there.
Well, I think we've run out of time, I had a chance to get those, uh, UV things for free, but we just.
Oh, yeah.
Pull that puppy together in time. All right.
Wait till flu season hits, everything will be free again.
Sorry for geeking out, everybody, uh, back to your regular scheduled program.
So, do you want me to do the report for Grafton on the, the same topic? So at Grafton, Gary, to his credit, uh, jumped on, uh, Vermont Efficiency and the grants. I think it was the middle of July when he first got the announcement. So we're a little further along in the process and he's provided me with two reports that I sent to the board, uh, that are pretty thorough about the, you know, the steps that we need to take. And just like what Liz was saying, you know, uh, Vermont Efficiency has indicated that they will, have a verbal agreement to pay for 90% of the cost and the 10% that we'll have to cover can come out of the, um, budget. And I'll, I'll do a quick overview and then I'm gonna let Gary take questions because just like Liz, when I start talking about all this stuff, my eyes start to glaze over, I go, what? A what, what is that thing, what does it do? So, um, we're replacing the exhaust fans and currently we've spent, you know, around 5,000 on engineering and HVAC, and there's no need to replace large-scale items, uh, you know, knock on wood, but, you know, possibly some timers. And working on the furnace, being able to have the fans on without producing heat seems to be an issue, which sounds like that's what Adam was just talking about in their school. And the current thermostats won't allow that, so we're looking into how to replace that. Uh, Gary has purchased air purifiers for all the classrooms and we do have fans that are put up so that we're pushing out, uh, the stale air, air and opening the windows so all the fresh air can come in. And Gary, is there anything you want to add to that or how did I do?
Gary, you're muted, so if it was an insult, you weren't heard, which is.
Whew, boy, I'm glad my mic was off. Oh, you did fine, Helen, we. We've, uh, our system's 30, 30 years old, that's why we jumped on it. We're a little older than probably some of the Westminster system, but I wanted to get ours checked out. Uh, make sure all the equipment was running right. We did actually find out that one of the actuators that opens the damper for the fresh air intake was, was bad and we gotten that replaced right away. What Helen was alluding to in the conversation about, uh, being able to control the heat. The engineer had told us that we could turn on the fan in our fan coil units that are all in the ceilings of all the classrooms to get more fresh air coming into the classroom. I tried that the day before school started and when the first staff got there was 95 degrees in the classrooms. We had turned the heat right off and only had the fans on, but something didn't work right. The mechanical contractor has told us that we need new thermostat controls, the ones we have don't allow that function, so. That's one thing that we're gonna be working on or still need to do, we haven't done that yet, but. Um, everything else looks good, we've had the engineer tell us twice and then the HVAC people, the, uh, mechanical people tell us that our, our system looks good, everything seems to be running the way it's supposed to be. Just plugging along.
Thank you. One thing I would like you, uh, gentlemen and your principals to do and with the administration is if we are starting to look at, you know, serious budget busting bills with this stuff, not that there aren't going to be a lot of them for a lot of things. You know, uh, just kind of keep us in the loop because I want to make certain that if we go to voters with this or ask for bonds, I've got a sense as to what we're asking for. Any other questions, anybody, and, uh, yes, Cheryl.
Thank you, well, if, if our principals have completed their reports, I do have a question or two, so let me just. Yep, okay, you're nodding. So I'd like to go back to the cohesion, the coordination with all the principals, which I think is great. And it, it was helpful to see the planning tool, uh, that, that you're using. Um, my question is, are you suggesting that every teacher at every grade level is doing the same thing every day?
No, 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 not at all. No, they, they, um, we've set some specific goals around, um, what we're looking for, like communication to families, clear understanding of what kids are learning, that, those kinds of things. But, you know, we do have a common, uh, reading and program right now for dysbinale classroom. So it's likely that some of that will be common, but, you know, you judge that based on your group of students. So it definitely will not be, you know, planning system-wide what you're gonna do on each day. It's more about, um, a consistency of, you know, being clear so that families and students know what they're learning.
Yeah, and the other benefit is if you have multiple students in the school in different grades or different classes, as a parent, you're looking at the same format and finding infor- information the same way, so it's another useful way.
I, I appreciate that, thank you both. And, and what I want to make sure that we emphasize then is whereas the academic outcomes, the goals are the same, uh, at, at each grade level in the big picture, there's still room for creativity and innovation and the personalization that each teacher will be able to do with each child. So it's that mix that you're working on there.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. And then one other comment about the outdoors, it is correct that as much fresh air going through as possible. So the idea of creating contained little units outdoors, that would not be the goal, that would not be what we want to see, uh, happening. When it comes to changes in the weather, keep us posted if we need as a community to help with getting the right clothes for the right weather as the weather changes. There's so much that can be done outdoors, but it needs to be, the kids need to be dressed appropriately for it. So keep us posted, if there's anything we as community members can do to help.
Right, thank you.
Are there any other questions that, uh, uh, my board members have for colleagues here? When we all, oh, I said Melissa, it's getting dark in your room, so I didn't see your hand, sorry.
That's okay, um, I'm curious, you told us how many students are in Group A and in Group B and virtual? How many students are absent? And are there students that were missing somehow that aren't getting their needs met through this format in either way because of family needs and demands? So how many are absent and what are we doing?
I, I think all of our students that we were expecting to come back to school either enrolled in the hybrid, enrolled in VTVLC and I think there was one who enrolled in homeschool.
And that's, we had a couple of students we had to track down that didn't show up on the first day and have concluded that investigation to determine that, you know, they're not, they no longer live in Grafton or Athens, so all the students that need to be enrolled either in VTVLC or in Grafton are there.
That's awesome, and I also want to share, just so everyone knows, I know stories of eight and nine-year-olds that are 100% alone 40 hours a week in their homes, unsupervised. And I still see this as a district problem that we, even if they're there, their development is not being met properly. So I hope that even though they're attending and not absent, that there is some awareness that students' needs aren't fully being met. And that I hope that there's problem solving and creativity to address this moving forward.
So I, I guess it would be helpful to know, you know, for both Liz and I, who those families are that we can reach out to. We have lots of resources that we can bring to the table, so, to help those kids and families that are in that situation.
Have you told families that you have those resources? Because I don't believe that I've read anything about anything like that.
We did share, um, earlier before school started or right at the very beginning, on our website, I think I sent it home and on the Facebook page around the different childcare options that were available. I can reset.
I do recall that and as someone who works in that system, you, there's contact numbers, but there isn't actual, um, there really isn't availability to those contact numbers. And Winston Pouty Center, I know is one of them, I mean, they're struggling. Like, they know that they're not meeting these needs, like, they're trying to, but it's a huge problem and in my community of early age, a lot of our programs have created pop-up programs to meet this need. But we're not even, I get phone calls all day long for families that are telling me horrific stories about their lives. And they're looking to me as a director of a different program to help them and we don't have capacity and there isn't capacity in that system, so I think schools need to continue to know that.
Melissa, I'm just gonna jump in for a second, this is something that Deb Wright over at the high school has also, uh, been banging a drum on and for a good reason. It is something that I think we do need to find a way of making certain that kids that are essentially latchkey during the day have some, some way of connecting with, uh, with others on the days that they're not here. And we, we do need to figure out some sort of programmatic, uh, approach to helping them. I, I think that you can emphasize that there really is a risk, particularly for some of our kids that might, uh, be in families where, uh, where the need is more acute than, uh, than our, you know, regular, run-of-the-mill, middle-class, working-from-home folks. There's a big constituency that we're not, we're not taken care of enough and we gotta figure out a way. Thank you for bringing that up.
Melissa, would you be a, a resource for that, for helping our families? Would you be somebody we could reach out to? I guess I'm.
My pop-up program is not allowing all students into it. We're trying to keep it as safe for our students and doing older siblings, staff, students, things like that. I certainly am well-versed at navigating that system and questions could be asked of me, but, um, it, I, you can try, we'll see what happens. I can, you know, I don't know what I can guarantee you.
Um, you know, Melissa, I think this might be an issue where you would want to spend a little time with Lynn and even, uh, even Chris with their permission, because I think that, uh, it is an issue of, uh, concern across all districts and it wouldn't be necessarily having you guys do it, but to perhaps serve as a bit of a model for how to do it. Because I think that, uh, we've been just trying to keep the doors open here and there's a lot that needs to be done that we haven't done yet. And I, I know Lynn and, and, um, Chris has said, don't send me your entire board every time there's a problem. But this sounds like a place where you've got some expertise and it would be good.
Well, I'm happy to do that if they are interested and if they want to send me an email, I would certainly make time to do that because our students are super important. And I don't believe that right now that every dollar that we're investing in education is gonna serve the long run in a, in a system-wide level, so it's important.
Any other questions, uh, people? We all good? Oh, I see a hand, yes, Cheryl.
Well, thank you, I mean, I really appreciate Melissa raising this and I, I can only imagine the many issues that each child is coming to school with and the many who were not seeing through the virtual, uh, learning academy. I, I would just ask the, the teachers, the counselors, the teachers, the parents that I see on this call tonight, really let us know if you're seeing issues that, that we might not otherwise know about. I mean, this is deeply concerning. And, um, I know there need to be systems of communication. Having said that, if there are problems you're seeing, raise them in a way that we can confidentially and appropriately help as a community to address them. I don't think we can, we can solve all of this tonight, but I'm just offering a, a plea that we really do need to do the best we possibly can for these kids in every way and for our teachers and for the staff. I'm worried about each of you in these times, this is really difficult and challenging. So as ever, you know, let the, let the conversations be open and let us help where we can. So that's all I think I can say right now, Jack, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Jessa, I, I don't know if you were muted or didn't do that, if you had anything more?
I don't, Lynn, can you turn on, um, the private chat so I could send you a message?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, um, with no objection, I'm going to move on to finance unless there are further questions. Uh, so I guess it's your turn, Flora, uh, welcome to our reading.
Hi, thank you. So for us, um, I just wanna just remind you guys that we have, um, to work on warrants. We still have pending warrants for, um, 814 and 828. I, I'm not sure if it's something, uh, system glitched that you might not be getting the warrants or the emails. But you could just let us know to see what can we do, how we could work and fix it. I review them and it seems that they are going out. For this, um, board is, um, two signatures. Uh, we do have warrants that requires only one signature, but I guess you guys want it too. So that puts a hold on them, because right now we do have all of them with one signature, we're just missing the second one.
Did I sign those things for you, uh, Flora? If not, let me know, I, I usually do, just want to make sure I didn't miss them, we've had a few glitches.
I don't think I've seen those.
I do have Lynn's signatures, thank you Lynn.
Oh, then it sounds like it may be me. All right, uh, they, they also can go to, you know, I think it's any two members, so, uh, feel free.
The only authorized signatures that we have in the system is either yours or Lynn, but if you want to authorize somebody else, we could just do that then.
Sounds like I've screwed up, was it what you're saying, but, uh?
No, no. Uh, I know an email is supposed to go out when, um, Marlene creates a warrant, um, but, you know, we're not sure if it could go through, you know, like your garbage mail and you're not seeing them, it has to be something, because honestly, you answer all my emails.
All right, well, let me go look for those and I'll give you a ring tomorrow and if, uh, if others of you would like to do this, you know, the fin- the financial trail tells you more about what's going on than almost anything except these reports. And it's a very useful way to understand, uh, things that, you know, it's a good way to ask questions and, and do a lot of learning, so. If you do.
Jack, this is Cheryl and I think, uh, Jessa was about to say the same thing, I haven't been seeing the warrants for at least a month. And so, um, as routine, Flora, if you would send them to all of us, even though you, you have two authorized signatures, it allows the rest of us to stay informed.
This doesn't come from me because, um, so the way this works, Panda Dog, is that we're having the free option, they didn't want to, um, purchase it. The problem with having the free option is that the only person that could do it, but it's just Marlene. Now, if you want to add other people to use it and be able to be sending the warrants out and following up on emails, we will have to purchase the license.
We weren't getting them before though, because I think.
That's right, we were.
We did any two as our signatories for warrants, um.
So maybe I can ask Ricky to look into it.
Yeah, they're not.
Today.
Yeah, I just looked in my box for those two dates, and I don't see anything. So.
Yeah, so, um, we checked, and all of the other ones were signed, but we, it's showing just eight fourteen and eight twenty-eight, which is the two that went out in August. And they do have Lynn's signature, so I'm not sure if it is that maybe it's stopping somewhere.
Uh, well, let's, we'll offline, let's you and I see if we can work it out, and I may make some phone calls to all of you to figure out how we put Humpty Dumpty back together again, because I want people to see this stuff if we can. How's that?
Yeah, it would be good as well for maybe other people to see it. Um, like, we've been, um, reviewing different issues that have been going on with approvals. Um, I guess, um, so I get the last approval now, before it wasn't me, it was somebody else. And, um, things are being, were approved without maybe just review how they were supposed to. You know, principals, I know they're busy, and they've been approving things without actually looking more into the deep. So, um, having the board look at the warrant helps, but at the point that it gets in a warrant, it's paid out already. So right now, the issue is that we had a warrant that got approved for a purchase with a high, um, dollar amount for a shipping. Um, if anybody that reviewed that purchase would have checked, you know, like, what it was being purchased, and all the dollars would have known that this shipping amount wasn't something that should have been approved. So, um, I just reviewed the process. Um, maybe later on, everybody could just gather with the board and just see that maybe, um, approval should go some other way.
Well, let's you and I sit, make sure, let's you and, and I and my co-board chairs sit, because I know that this is, uh, apparently an issue that's, uh, popped up a couple of other places, and I think it's solvable, and I wanna make sure that we do that, so we can report to my board. Just what a great job we have of solving the problem.
We, we are trying to just put a little hole in expenses that are not needed. You know, I, I know, um, they were used to purchasing just because they see something somewhere else cheaper. Is a hole that I need to put on our end, because in winning other purposes, it's not showing, you know, like, why is the purpose of purchasing something if it's not something that is emerging as for COVID?
It's, it's very hard to get this stuff done without just sitting down with you guys in person. We, we just have to dedicate some time and do that. Uh, anything else you got for us, Flora?
Yes, so beginning on Monday, eh, everybody's gonna be getting a report that is called Budget Versus Actual. This, um, report is gonna show everything budgeted through the year, and your current expenses and your current year today. So we're gonna have, um, different reports for the boards, different reports for the principals. Um, I created this with, um, Leslie from E-Finance, so that way we don't have any holes with the reports. It's gonna be automated by the system. So if by Tuesday, anybody doesn't see anything of these reports, you could just email me. So that way you could be added to the list. I think I did pretty good adding everybody from the board. But, um, it'll help with all that fact of you guys not getting reports on time. So it will be automatic. Every other week, you're gonna start getting this report called Budget Versus Actual. That way you can review it, and then next meeting, you could just give me a feedback if you just think that the report should be adjusted or anything else should be added, like any extra information that you would like to have.
Flora, I'm gonna add something to your list right off the bat, and that is that, uh, year-to-date expense versus budget is useful, but year-to-date versus budget, uh, for current year, year-to-date versus budget for prior year is a way to let us know how we are tracking relative to where we've tracked in the past, because the way that we spend money is not the way normal business spends money. It tends to be very bursty. And, uh, you know, to say that we're spending eighty percent of our money in October, say, doesn't really help unless you know that we spent eighty-five percent the prior year. That kind of information is really helpful. So if, if that can be done, uh,
So will be like a comparison column?
Yeah, in other words, where we, you know, it's not only how we're tracking, it's also how we're tracking compared to how we've tracked in the past.
Okay.
You're talking, uh, you know, I've, I've, I've had to be the green-eyed shade guy for a couple of startups, and it's the only way I can get any idea whether or not we're going bankrupt or actually doing pretty well.
Yeah, I could contact Leslie to see if we could add that information to it as well. Um, so right now, um, the last thing that we would like to inform is, um, we are finished doing the mergers of the accounts, uh, for the elementary, that, uh, balance that we have pending. Um, so, uh, that is cleared.
One thing you will want to be aware of is we're gonna have a discussion about, about taking this collection of three towns and breaking them back up again at some point. Don't know where that's going to stand. Don't know if that's something people still wanna do, but if it is, and I suspect it is, one of the discussions that we will have to have is not only having these things laid out by function like you would normally do, but also by, by school at the very least, because, uh, people are gonna wanna know if, uh, what a dissolution is going to cost them, because it's gonna cost somebody something. And having an idea what the difference is in, uh, in expenses for the individual towns, or at least the, you know, Grafton Athens and Westminster is gonna be really important, because if the expenses turn out to be insane for one of those towns, they may lose their enthusiasm for the idea of dissolution. I don't know that that's the case, but we need to have the facts, because I want people to vote on facts. That's another, we'll have that conversation in more detail offline, but I wanted you to know it's there, and kind of explain to you what this is. We did this, uh, in the year after we, uh, consolidated, and the year before, we gave both a consolidated versus a separate, uh, budget line item. It, it's not hard. It just means you're gonna have to tag the items a little bit, and it's a pain in the neck. So.
Okay.
Any other questions, folks? I see Kathy.
Yeah. Um, it was brought up to us by, um, our town, our clerk, Kim, record, about the surplus, the ninety-two thousand surplus that was not given to us, or that we recognized it. And one of the board members wanted to know, does that mean for the budgets coming around, is that gonna be less ninety-two thousand for Grafton?
Um, no, I wouldn't, I didn't put it at, as less than ninety-two thousand. It just got moved into the new, um, community bank account, and it did go to the, um, to Grafton, because it is actually money from town of Grafton and, um, Grafton contract from SD. That's where they came from. And actually, it was, uh, at the end, and the closing numbers were eighty-eight, three sixty-four, and fifty-six cents. That was the, um, closing balance.
And so.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So where does that money go? You know, that surplus goes into the Grafton account?
It, it does, yes, because that's where it came from. So it was just transferring to a Grafton account now from, uh, from the new account that you guys have through the SU.
Now, this gets complicated for, and I need, and we do need guidance on this, uh, because I know in some cases, community assets uh, accrue to the district without so much as a buyer leave. I believe there's a six-million-dollar building that, uh, Westminster paid for. That's now the common property of the three towns in the new di- in the consolidated district. Uh, I don't know if, what, what, if this is something, if this money is money against charges that the SU places against the, against the town for its share, or if this is an asset that essentially dissolved into a, a common account for the district. And I, that, that's, I think, probably the answer that the folks in Grafton need to have. Kind of like to know if this is still benefiting them in some way, if it's just benefiting the district as a whole.
No, it's just benefiting them, and I did put it as cash in a bank, in the bank as an account. Uh, I didn't put it as a benefit for the SU, because it's just not money for, uh, from us. It was prior to merger.
Okay, and this is not an asset that get combined as a consequence?
Yeah.
All right. Um, that's, that's helpful to know, because I wasn't sure the answer either. It's a relief, too, for Grafton folks, of which I am one, will feel that's a relief.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, people? I think you're off the hook, Flora. Um, we'll come up with some, some question you can't answer later on, but not right now. Um, all right, let me just go pull up my screen so I can figure out where I am on our agenda. Um, that's minutes. Hold on a second. Oh, bother, bother. Here we go, agenda. Um, all right, old, this is number six. Old unfinished business, anticipated dissolution of districts, and with people's permission, I'll speak on this a little bit. Uh, unless, uh, do we have any of our town man, town administrators here? No. All right, then I'll do it. Um, as you, I sent all of you, uh, sort of a quick summary of what we know about the Halifax-Reedsboro, uh, attempt to dissolve their, uh, union district. It was successful, because it turns out that there's a word, a little word called shall in the, uh, in the, uh, language of seven twenty-one A that says that if, uh, if the voters, after a year of being consolidated, wish to dissolve their union, there is this procedure that you go through, and if you follow that procedure, the State Board of Education, at least right now, is obliged to approve a dissolution. Now, it's not a dissolving of the district so much as it is a withdrawal. In, uh, the Reedsboro-Halifax case, they simply had one town withdraw from the, uh, from the union district, which essentially made, uh, the other one the holder of the title, which they're probably gonna change back to a town district. In Grafton, Athens, and Westminster, we have two. So we'd have, the procedure probably would be to have two, uh, town meetings, or, because we can do this, uh, two, um, two Australian ballots to, i- in the towns that wish to withdraw, uh, to withdraw. Uh, this can, uh, the process of warning such meetings can be done by the uh, select boards, or can be done by petition. Uh, once those are done, uh, the, uh, and the thing is warned, thirty to forty days later, uh, a town meeting or Australian ballot is held. If they are approved, then the legacy, the, the districts, those towns that did not withdraw are asked to have an Australian ballot to approve it. Those of you who have been around for the endless discussions about Grafton withdrawing from the, uh, from the Union High School will, will remember this process. The difference here is that I assume that our three towns would approve anybody that wished to withdraw, and, uh, the law was changed so that the State Board uh, is shall, and doesn't have any obligation to con- to consider it. They just have to do it if the, uh, all the towns agree. Um, it's essentially think petition or vote of select board, thirty days to, um, have the meeting, thirty more days to have the, uh, other towns approve it, and thirty more days to have the State Board of Education yell at us and then sign it, because they have to. Now, uh, the, uh, Secretary French claims that this is, this is not, this is more sloppy writing that we knew about Act forty-six in the fir- first place, that they didn't go in and obviate this language. Uh, I have, uh, Molly Gray and a bunch of other politicians in the state saying, "No, that was intentional." It was only supposed to be a year, and it was a year to approve that, that saved you money, and if it doesn't, you're all more than welcome to pull out. So the question is, how fast do we need to do this? Do we need to do this, uh, and time it around town meeting? Or do we need to get the show on the road yesterday so that we can, uh, slide in under any potential, uh, legislative remedy? Um, that's the story. Um, I'm curious if it turns out that, uh, we need to, uh, put this before the voters instead of the, uh, select board, would people be willing to meet and have that discussion and put warnings out to the individual towns?
I'm up for doing some discussion and finding out more about this and how it would affect each of the towns.
Right. That, that's why I told Flora, be on the lookout for a discussion about, uh, trying to get some sort of budgetary data together, so people will know, you know, what the consequences of, of a dissolution would really look like, because I don't think you do this without knowing the numbers.
You were picking me up and told me that I needed a mask. I was waiting.
We all, we, we, we will work this out, Flora. This is gonna be less fun than you thought, and you probably didn't think it was going to be any. Um, the, you know, I, I, uh, Cheryl, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I think, I think I'm feeling like there might be some helpfulness in putting this in context just for a moment. You know, um, the, so, so here we are, uh, with Athens, Grafton, and Westminster, having been forcibly merged by the State Board of Education into one school district, and we're still a part of the supervisory union. What the current law does allow, that has now been tested, um, by two towns in the state, is that a merger, whether it's, a merger could be dissolved, and that's what happened. I listened to the State Board of Education meeting the other day when this, uh, when this occurred. So what would that mean, and whether, why would we do it, or would we do it? Um, I, I, I guess, I, I would say, first of all, that it's, it's from a personal point of view, and I think most importantly, from the point of view of students and teachers, our merger, Athens, Grafton, and Westminster, we've worked really hard to have it be something that served all the students. And, and, and I don't think from that level, people have seen, uh, a lot of difficulty. Where there are risks, and some community members are deeply concerned about it, is that the merger takes away discussion of and responsibility for the school budget from town meeting. It moves it to, uh, a three-town meeting in our case, Athens, Grafton, and Westminster coming together. So of those people who are interested in the possibility of, of having a vote of the people to dissolve the merger, if that were to happen, a big reason for it is to bring responsibility and discussion closer to each town again, and to have that business occur in town meetings. To Lynn Morgan's point, there's a lot to learn about all of this, and it's just become clear that there is this opportunity. There is now some, uh, current precedent, and people throughout the state uh, are, are looking at to see whether those town-school districts could once again be reestablished. Eh, eh, if, if that were to occur, at least my personal view would be that we would remain actively a part of the supervisory union, and one goal, should that happen, would be for us to do even more as a supervisory union with all the towns, uh, in the whole of the union. Um, so at any rate, I think some of the things that have been going on, the fact that the principals are now meeting, that's a great illustration of one of our intentions around if we had been allowed to have an alternative governance, um, model, that would have been, you know, just a, a, a great example of. Um, model, that would have been, you know, just a, a, a great example of how the collaborative work could, could, um, could take place. So at any rate, Jack is bringing this up because there is movement, there's movement because of this action by the State Board of Education. As required by law, having been asked to consider it. Uh, and we'll, we'll see. The, the select boards need to talk about it, community members need to talk about it. Big picture, I don't think this would change very much from the point of view of individual schools. And certainly not students and teachers, um, and all of the others involved in the day-to-day work. But it might be a process that again brings back to each local community. Uh, even more of the day-to-day uh, knowledge and responsibility.
Um, in fact, uh, just, no, I, that's a good point. I, I think that, you know, I, I've been. I've been talking awful lot of school board chairs today and um. And one of the things that has come up is, well, if the state lets you do it, what does it look like post-mortem? And I think that probably my recommendation would be that it would be some, at least. That first year would be some version of the uh, Athens, Grafton joint contract arrangement, which was in fact. Sort of the inspiration for our alternative governance model, that meetings could happen concurrently. Especially in, in uh, in Zoom world, it's not that hard. We, we can make this work without necessarily. Uh, giving anybody but the accounting people nightmares, Lynn, uh, that was for your benefit. Uh, so you don't think, so that Chris doesn't think this is the craziest thing he's ever heard of. Um, we, we can make this, we can make this work. I think that in some ways, it might be a basis for having all the boards work more collaboratively. And closer together and uh, uh, but the end of the day. The budgetary authority and ultimate accountability needs to be as direct to the communities as we can make it. Uh, and if we can do it without anybody suffering a horrible financial penalty, I'd like, I, you know, personally, I'd like us to try. Um, we may be asked to. Do the warning in conjunction with the three towns or the two or three towns that want to go forward with this. So, if that turns out to be the recommendation, I just want people to be aware that I may come to you. Maybe sooner rather than later in the next month to, to have a more in special meeting of our board to do that. I don't think that's the appropriate approach. I believe that Homer and the other board chairs have been very clear to me. That this has to be done at select board level, but I know Bill Kern wasn't sure about that and I wasn't sure. And I think that there were some questions Russ had, so we'll have to work that through, but. Uh, look, look for a memo and look for something in Grafton News and in uh. And in uh, other Westminster Gazette and the Athenian, because there'll be more stuff about this in the next year or two. Any, any questions, complaints, wisecranks, anything? You know, I mean, most of you have been fairly loud about the need to separate this out. I, I was acting somewhat. Premature, you know, without asking and that's not a good practice on my part, but I, we just seem to have some. Hard timelines to get some of this done and so I wanted to make sure I could discuss it with the community. What the board, what the select boards know, what the community know that this was up and that this was an option. And I want to make sure, obviously, you better know, because I can't be speaking on your behalf without speaking to you. Alrighty, let's see, um, haven't heard, that, that's all I got on that. There's not an action for tonight. Um, the um, there is two items on new business. Um, connectivity issues, I wanna, we had a drop in connectivity due to uh. Due to Vermont Tel, uh, Friday through Monday, and I want to know if we had students or programs were screwed up by this stuff. Helen, did you, were you able to run uh, the shop as usual or were there problems?
You know, t- teachers uh, are really great about being flexible with whatever gets thrown at them. You know, so, yes, connectivity was lost on Friday and they carried on. Uh, as, as great teachers always do and had a great day, you know, with education at Grafton. It was sort of in and out Thursday afternoon.
Yeah.
But then really out on Friday, I would imagine that the VTVLC students were not able to get on at all. I'm sure that that day uh, was not possible for them.
So, what do we, how do we remediate that kind of thing?
You know, I, I feel like VT, that VT was pretty quick about getting it back on. I'm not sure. That there's much that can be done, you know, when that goes down, certainly in. Uh, you know, past schools that I've been in, there have been incidents when connectivity does happen. It's rare, but it does happen and, uh, you know, we used to operate schools without any connectivity for a long time. So this is uh, you know, a new uh, dilemma that we're definitely relying on it pretty heavily right now. So, um, you know, unless it becomes a pattern, you know, I think that's, I don't know what other options there are in Grafton for connectivity.
There is some Comcast, but it's limited. Uh, the uh, when I was waiting for three hours online the other day. Uh, the message kept on saying, if for any reason you're not satisfied with the service that we're providing, we'll provide you with a month free. Um, I would suggest that uh, that the school system and the students that were stranded, uh. See if that offer was for real. Um, now, make Michelle continue, love me very much, but I think, you know, make the promise, you've got an obligation to keep it. The other item on this list was, let me see, once again, I'm on the wrong page. Uh, agenda. Yeah, um. We have audits that were due many, many months ago. And I understand Flora that the audits for the old school districts are done and are sitting in a drawer somewhere. Uh, we need to get our, I need to get some process in place to either have this board or the legacy boards. Approved those audits, because I think that's the final step. And I'm wondering if we can, what you would like us to do? Do you want us to uh. Take them on and approve them in our next meeting, or do you want me to try to call a meeting of the legacy? Boards that were supposedly out of existence almost six months ago and have them do it?
I believe that maybe we should do them. Um, I don't know about contacting people that are not part of it anymore.
That would be my recommendation. So, let's put that on the agenda for our next meeting. And let's get that taken care of, shall we?
Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm feeling very uncomfortable about how long this has had out there. Um. Go ahead.
Uh, you think, you Jack, I, I do think it's important to have the legacy boards have the opportunity to review and comment on them. I think, I know that David Major, the chair in Westminster of the legacy board, as you're calling it. Feels very strongly about that responsibility that the prior board had, and I think the other board members would as well. So let's make it a yes and. Let's invite the former board members to take a look, to review and to comment, and then bring their recommendation uh, to this board. That would be my suggestion.
Do is we have, I think, believe we have emails for virtually all members of the original town boards. Lynn, you and I can coordinate getting a copy with, with, for getting copies of this out, not of these um. Audits out, not just to our current board members, but to them. And let's just make a note to invite them to the next meeting where they can comment and then we can vote. In their, on their behalf, and that would be, I think, the process that would be best for this. Um, uh, Joe, it looks like you want to say something? Oh, okay. Um, does that sound reasonable, Cheryl? Uh, Melissa, what do you think, guys?
Yeah, sounds good to me, Lynn.
All right, all right. Um, then let's, let's just do that, Lynn Carey, and we'll, because I want to get that. I want to get that off our list. Um, I had an eight here because I am concerned that. Uh, what happened on, uh, with Vermont Tel could happen with Comcast. What could happen with uh, our other providers in our region? And if there's, there are uh, outages that make school impossible to conduct. Seems like it falls under the same rule that if we had a blizzard on, on Monday and Tuesday that was cleaned up on Wednesday and. Or on Thursday and Friday, we have to figure out a mechanism to make the kids who are not in. Were not able to be in class, to make them whole, because I think, and I'm, and um, I don't know. How to do this, but I wanted to ask if people thought this was important enough to send to the SU Policy Committee. Maybe this was just my worry. Oh, no, I heard see, go ahead, Melissa.
Well. I'm not quite sure if this would work or not, but could teachers just record themselves on a computer and email it? Because it'll go through eventually and students could catch up that way, or is that an unreasonable? I don't know.
Ben, this is, I think, yeah, actually, and the, and the principals, this is your, you know. Is there a way other than adding days to the year or, you know, counting these like there's snow days that we should use? What should we do?
What Chris has talked about is that if it's a, you know, the roads are unsafe, but yet we all have connectivity. That it's, we could potentially just run school, um, you know, remotely. We certainly learned how to do that in the spring quite well. Uh, but, you know, if it's a really bad storm or nor'easter runs through and everything's down and connectivity's down, then. Then it's truly gonna have to be a snow day.
Well, it just seems to me that uh, with, with uh, with digital, this digital lifeline being the equivalent of a good road. And if, you know, if one is out, it's the same as if the other is out and just wanting to know how we should address this, because. I, I suspect this will not be the last time that there's some sort of hiccup, because. Uh, Google was out for a day, uh, earlier. Lynn?
When we have this disconnect, the folks that are in school are doing okay. But the, the students that are at home, are they unable to do their projecting and their lessons?
Well, the, the beauty of way, that the way the system is set up is that those at-home students on Friday. Uh, couldn't get on to do their work, but many of them got their work done on Saturday or Sunday. They weren't due back to be in school again, you know, until the following Monday. So, you know, there's, there's five days. That they're not in the building and that work is posted enough so that they can work on it, you know, really anytime they want to.
They're not being able to do it when the, when the, the internet was down.
Right.
Delayed their work, but they were able to work on it.
Right, not, probably not that day, but I, what I heard is that most everybody was back on on Saturday. And those that weren't back on on Saturday, you know, got it done on Thursday. And then there's those kids that as soon as they got the assignments on Tuesday night, they had it all done by Wednesday. So, you know. There's plenty of time in there for, you know, students to be able to do that. The one thing they couldn't do was join the morning meeting, which is all our students join that on a regular basis.
Um, maybe that's the answer, but even then we should document, that's the expectation if we're, if this happens on. I, I just think there needs to be some, you know, documented process that says we haven't. Despite what we've seen, we haven't lost a day, and if we haven't lost, if we have lost a day, what we plan to do on it. And thank goodness our representative on the uh. On the uh, on Policy Committee is Tech Guru, isn't that right, Jessica?
Uh, yeah. The VT outage was uh, hopefully an occurrence that the Public Service Board is going to ensure is not repeated. Um, I read their public explanation they provided um, in the Chester Telegraph about what happened. And um. Yeah, but I guess the bigger concern I have is that there's also no phones at the school during this whole. We had phones that didn't work for days here and the cell tower is down in town when the internet's down. So that's kind of a issue having our kids at school where there's no working phone. Um, but other than that, I, I don't expect we will have a repeat of this anytime soon. That is not immediately um, remediated possibly by someone else.
Verizon was down this summer on two sec, two separate days. So, and it was down across three states, including part of Vermont. Uh, so, so these things, it, I, I'd like to think this was like a hurricane kind of thing. It happens only once and not again. But I just think that we might want to at least look at some, you know, some language. And maybe we decided it's just so rare, we don't care, but if we do care, we ought to have something in writing as to what to do about it. So. The, that, that's, that's the only thought I had. Uh, you know, I'll defer to you, your collective wisdom on this, but I uh. Uh, I, I had it raised a couple of times, once quite impolitely, but on, on, on phone calls, so I.
I guess send it to the um, I think you already did actually to ask it be on the next Policy Committee agenda.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, I honestly don't know when that meeting will be.
Oh, that's actually a discussion I had with David Clark, because we're about a year behind having any policy meetings. And the, the list of to-dos is starting to get long and I'm going to start getting unpleasant about it if we don't find a way to accommodate you guys. Um, all right, yeah, I think we're done. Uh, uh, anything else anybody needs to bring before this August body? Now, hands not being raised, uh, I'm going to go on to nine directors' comments. Uh, start, starting with uh, starting with Jessa West Clark.
I'm gonna go with the um, I've said enough, but I am actually, the um, VTVLC started really. Um, doing lessons this week and I think as long as the teachers. Get familiarized with the platform, I think it's gonna be really good. Um, and I'm actually kind of enjoying this little foray into public school choice we've had. Um, because I think this platform could actually be a better choice for some of our kids that aren't. Doing quite as well in a school building. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping we're gonna collect a lot of data about how this works and. Sort of be able to look at it in the future.
Thank you, Jessa. Thank you, Jessa. Cheryl?
Well, once again, I want to thank all the community members who have participated tonight. It, it's just always a gift. To have you here, to have you listening. When you speak up, that's great. So, please know that we really appreciate those of you who've joined tonight and. And I want to say again, this is echoing something Helen said a few minutes ago, but to state it again. Our children, those who are not participating in the Vermont Learning Collaborative and therefore are home seven days a week. The children who have signed up to come be in the building. Two days a week in person with teachers and counselors and others are away from that environment five days a week. And we do need to know as much as possible about what's going on and how to be of support and to make sure. They're getting the positive educational experiences uh, that we all hope for. So again, be eyes and ears and uh, let us know. Thank you.
Uh, Melissa?
Oh, I'm good. I just thank everybody for all the hard work everyone's doing. I know that. Your lives are like mine. Man, there's so much more on my plate right now and I know self-care has been so important in my life. And in the circles of people around me. So I just hope that everybody takes the opportunity. To be well, you know, in all the ways that they can be and to do those extra things, to breathe, to slow down. To take time to be with kids, to not get frustrated, all that stuff, because it's really easy when we're stressed to use strategies that don't work well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Lynn, Morgan? Lynn, Morgan?
Reiterate what everybody's saying, just thanks to all of those in the field that are working so hard. And if there's ever anything I can do to help in the background, I know I can't come in the schools at this point, but anything in the background, please let me know. I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you. I'll just quickly say that, thank you all for being here tonight. It really, it helps in so many ways to have conversations, even detailed ones, about what's going on in the school. And I'll say to the people that have been auditing tonight, do feel free, you know, to check in, either with individual board members, certainly check in with me if you want, and that goes for anybody in the administration or on our local select boards, because I think it's important that we don't, that COVID doesn't isolate us in ways that make that hard. I'm painfully aware of the amount of separation that we have and aware of how much that makes getting things done and just being comfortable with our friends and our coworkers difficult. So use the phone or whatever social media thing, or come outside my door and shout through a mask, whatever you feel you need to do. I'd be happy to see you. With that note, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All right, all in favor, turn off that button on the top of your computer.